All right. This is February 3rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a committee of the whole meeting for District 96 School Board. Kathy, can you call the room?
Certainly, Mr. Barasati.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Marhol.
Here.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Muirhead.
Here.
And Mr. Hunt.
Here.
Okay, we have a call.
All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. At this time, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, if not, then we will go on to committee reports. First one listed is the Education Committee. Sherry is not present right now.
Yeah, and I can just take that. So Angela Dozel is here to give us an update on teaching and learning. We have really just a variety of things to share in regard to this very unique school year.
Good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you again. As you saw in the board memo, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about what we've seen from the hybrid learning model that we've had, as well as how that's playing a role into our planning for third trimester and our planning for the upcoming school year. I also want to give an update on state assessments that we are looking at for the upcoming months, and then talk a little bit about summer school and five essentials. So when we talk about third trimester planning, one of the things we're looking at for third trimester is how can we increase student contact? So we've had this hybrid learning model. We've been doing well with this hybrid learning model, and we want to see how can we get students in front of teachers more, because we know that having the kids in front of the teachers, having kids in person, is great and beneficial for those families that have chosen adoption. So we're looking at a few different ways to do this. We haven't settled on anything yet, because there are different pieces on the back end that we have to take care of before we can make that happen. Whatever we decide to do, we have to continue with our safety and health protocols. So we have to maintain our social distancing. We'll be looking at maintaining, anything we do, we'll maintain the number right now of no more than 15 students in a group or in a class. And then we also need to make sure we have the classrooms and the staffing already to put any of this into motion. We've talked about, started talking about the possibility of adding alternating Wednesdays. Again, still working on some of the logistics of that. So if not alternating, what we've started to talk about is if not alternating Wednesdays, what are some other ways we can add contact time for our hybrid students who are in-person learning? We continue to have that conversation. Martha and I continue to meet with Ms. May and Mr. Harvalis to talk through different ideas. So hopefully, in the next upcoming weeks, we'll have some solid ideas for you on how we'd like to increase academic student contact time. We're also looking at increasing some encore time with exploring in-person band and orchestra options. We have, I've been talking with other school districts that have been implementing in-person band and orchestra. Anything we decide to do, we will again ensure safety and health protocol. We'll follow the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines, which include looking at bell covers for instruments that have bells, like saxophones, trombones, and such. We'll continue with no more than 15 students in a group. We'd host band or orchestra in larger areas, so that maybe looking at the gym, the large gym at Hauser, the cafeteria for band groups, where we can also open windows and have fresh air flowing in and out. And then for orchestra, students would still be able to wear their masks, so we could have orchestra in the orchestra room. With bands, speaking of wearing masks, our band students would wear a mask, but it would have a slit knit for those students that play a wind instrument or a brass instrument. Let's see, we're also looking at in-person co-curriculars. So we have on deck to have volleyball, starting in person, continuing with that safety and health protocols. Students would be required to wear masks throughout the whole volleyball practice, volleyball time. It would be a focus on looking at drills. And then, as of right now, not really talking about playing scrimmages against each other, but that would be something we would explore later on, as long as everything is on the right path. We're also looking at dance, to be in-person, again, small groups, be located in the cafeteria, and would happen after school. So volleyball would be after-school awesome. We have a couple of other coaches that have expressed an interest in looking at having in-person co-curriculars. So we'll continue to have those conversations to make sure we can ensure safe and health. Really excited about the different opportunities to provide for students to have more in-person time, in-person contact time, and looking forward to how we can help that happening on the academic level as well. When we look at initial planning for next year, one of the things that we're talking about is the Hauser start time, Hauser Junior High start time. This is a conversation that I know has been had for a couple of years. This is a conversation that we had started really ramping up right before the pandemic started in March of last year, but then with the pandemic, obviously, put that on hold. This year, we do start at 8:30, and our teachers have noticed a great advantage to starting at 8:30 in that they're still coming to school at 8 o'clock, and they're able to then collaborate with their colleagues before school, but also provide some supports for students, whether virtual or in-person, that they wouldn't have been able to provide before school if we had started at our regular time. So knowing that we already start at 8:30, seeing how that's working out, we've had less tardies. We really want to pursue looking at Hauser starting at 8:30 for the upcoming school year. So that is, and then as far as any other planning for next year, we're kind of in a holding pattern, because we don't know yet what's going to happen with vaccinations, what's going to happen with the virus itself, what's going to happen with guidelines from the Illinois State Board of Education, if they'll continue saying social distance requirements are six feet, if we'll say three feet or any other number. So it's hard to plan right now for the structure of school without having some of that information. We'll continue to follow what's happening, and then start to probably begin looking at plans once we are in spring and have a little bit more information. So coming up, and normal, yes.
Can you remind me what the schedule is for the elementary and when the Hauser end time would be?
Currently, or if we change the time?
Well, if changed.
If we were able to go back to a regular school day?
Please.
The elementary's schedule is 8:15 to 2:55, and then Hauser would be, if we stuck with the current student contact time, would be 8:30 to 3:35.
Thank you.
In regular times, it would be, we'd be rolling up on our state assessments, our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, Illinois Science Assessment, and then what is called the access test for ELL students, which is assessing their comprehension and communication in English. So it's that time. We are rolling up on that, and currently, there isn't a waiver. Last year with the pandemic, the Secretary of Education at the time, Betsy DeVos, issued a waiver for all schools to not have to take state assessments and have that federal requirement piece fulfilled. Before Betsy DeVos left her position, she had stated that she was not issuing waivers to school districts, and everyone should plan to meet this federal requirement of accountability. With a new Secretary of Education, and we haven't heard anything about the possibilities of waivers, states are beginning to reach out and send letters to Dr. Corgona, but currently, he hasn't taken a stance either way on whether or not he'll have a waiver. I know the superintendents in Illinois are conversing, and they've drafted a letter that they're planning to send to him. And it points out that we just have such a wide variance of how students are taking, or how students are learning right now. I think the letter had said about 53% of students in Illinois are remote, 38% are in a blended program, and 10% are in person. So given the variance in how students are learning, it doesn't make sense to assess right now. The letter hasn't been sent, and the state superintendent hasn't sent a waiver letter yet. So currently, we're proceeding as if we don't have a waiver. I'm hopeful, the administrative team, I know the teachers are all hopeful, will get a waiver, but in the meantime, we have to proceed as if we don't have one. So what does that mean? For the access test for our ELL students, the window for that test will begin March 15th, and will last till May 25th. Students will have to come, it's a five-part test, and it looks at vocabulary, looks at oral language, written language. Students have to read. There's two other pieces I'm not remembering off the top of my head, but it's a five-part test. And so our ELL students will have to take the test in person. Our hybrid students will start with, our hybrid students, when the window opens. And then what we're going to have to do is reach out to our remote families to see if and when they'd schedule two days to take this five-part assessment. The Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the IAR, that window also opens mid-March. It opens the week before we start spring break, so we won't start testing on the IAR until after spring break, and it runs until mid-May as well. But we'll do the bulk of our testing within the first few weeks of April. Like the access test, the state's requiring that the IAR test be given in person. There's not a remote option for any of these state assessments. So again, with the IAR, we will have to, we'll start with our hybrid students, and then we're working on developing a plan for how we will work with remote families to see if and how, or if and when, we can get remote families, remote students, in to take the IAR.
Angela, you wanted to mention the participation rate? Did you mention?
I didn't yet. I will, I'm just gonna, the Illinois Science Assessment is the third state assessment. That is for fifth graders and eighth graders, and like the other two, has to be taken in person. So all three of these assessments have to be done in person, there's no remote option. But part of our school report cards involves a participation rate that has to be met or that is looked at when calculating our designations. Schools have to have 95, or supposed to have a 95% participation rate. And that participation rate then is used to help calculate a school's proficiency rate. So the proficiency, if we don't have 95% of our students at each school participate, that could impact our proficiency rating. The proficiency rating is calculated by taking the number of students who are eligible to test and dividing that by either the number of students, dividing it by the number of students who met and exceeded the standards, or by the number of students, or by 95%, whichever one is greater. So if we have 550 students who should test, and 320 of them test, then 320 is greater than 95%, and so our proficiency rating would be divided by 320. It could impact it. What I've, I've kind of played around with numbers right now, seeing how it might impact it, how drastic that impact would be. For us, with a larger number of students testing, the impact looks to be small, but I'm still testing numbers to see if that is truly the case. Any student that, any school that does not have a 95% participation rate, though, will not be exemplary. So we know we have a few schools who are currently exemplary. If we don't have 95%, they will not be exemplary again. So we're kind of hindered by the state saying it has to be in-person, but not all of our students are in in-person learning, and families that chose remote learning chose it for a reason. So we are working on how do we work with the family's choice and still try to assess all the students that we possibly can.
Quick question, so the waiver would be for, if a waiver did come through, it would be for all the testing?
Correct, it would be for all state testing.
Okay, so this is just like another logistical nightmare on top of a year full of logistical nightmares, kind of.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And that's pretty much what all my counterparts were pointing out when we were sitting in a webinar this past week, and they were telling us everything we have to accomplish and get done for state testing, that it's just insane that we have to even go through this, given everything else that we're working on.
I mean, I truly understand the importance of state testing. However, in a year when we're trying to make sure our students are engaged in learning during a pandemic, it just seems like a kind of frivolous use of your energy and time, but.
It is tough, right? Because we are working on students being engaged in learning. We also want to focus on the social emotional well-being of our students. And then on top of this, have to look at this accountability measure. When we have, and all school districts have, other types of accountability measures that are in place. We all recognize the importance of assessing students and seeing their growth, but don't necessarily feel that an in-person state assessment is where we need to go with it right now.
Would there ever be an option for an at-home version of it for those who are remote? Is that even being discussed or no?
It's not being discussed at all. They have said it will be in-person, and there is no remote option.
Joel, did you have a question?
Yeah, what are the consequences? I'm sure the larger educational community has discussed this, of a poor proficiency rating? If, for example, schools don't get enough kids to participate?
So if you are, if you have a lower rating, the proficiency rating playing a role in our school designations, if you have a lower rating and end up with a lower designation, after two years of that lower designation, then you're developing school improvement plans, and you end up on a watch list for the state.
Thank you.
Yep, great question.
Wouldn't, if there were tests, wouldn't all districts be in pretty similar situations? They'd all be kind of, it wouldn't be like we would be singled out as being in a particularly bad spot, and more or less, all the schools in the country would be sort of in a similar bind, right?
Yes, you're absolutely right, all of them would be.
And the other, I think the other question, I guess, is that if we have no test, how do we know how well students have learned this year? I mean, that's the other side of the coin. That's the benefit of having tests, even if they're imperfect, and even if it's, you know, under difficult circumstances. It just seems to me you get some information that way, which otherwise you don't have, so.
And I don't disagree with you at all, and that's part of what the national debate is about, too, is that there has to be some way to have accountability for what students are or are not learning during even a pandemic year. The conversation that we have as curriculum leaders in different districts that I've had with my cohort is that we have these other methods in our districts that we are using to assess student learning. So we know we utilize MAP testing here. We would continue to do that. In MAP testing, we're able to assess all of our students, not just the ones who choose to come in and be assessed. So that would be more consistent for us. We also have our FastBridge assessment. We'll do COGAT for our third and fifth graders. We have our curriculum-based measures that we'll do at the end of math and ELA at the end of the year. And then we have our assessments that we do throughout the school year, too. So we have other means to look at our growth and look at student learning. It is not, it's not, by not doing the state assessment, we aren't able to see that year-to-year growth on the IAR. But we still, even that would have an asterisk next to it, because I will be very pleased if we're able to test 100% of our students in person, but realistically, I don't think we will. So even that data would have an asterisk next to it, because it wouldn't be comparing apples to apples. Other testing questions before we go on to five essentials. So five essentials is also happening. The window for five essentials actually opened up last night, or yesterday? It's the third, no, opened today, and will run through April. We are going to, our staff members have started to take the five essential survey. I will be sending a letter home to families in a couple of weeks about the five essential survey. We're waiting, because Don's going to talk to you in a minute here about a modern learning survey that we're going to do as a district, and so we didn't want to overlap surveys for families. So we're waiting to do the five essentials, because that window's open till April. I'll send a letter home to families, letting them know about the link and asking for their participation, and letting them know that fourth through eighth grade students will also be taking the survey. The survey that, the students will take the survey the week of March 1st, and the parents will have till April 2nd to take the survey. We look at five essentials on a general level, but we've been talking as an administrative team about, is there a deeper level to look at the five essentials? Given some of the work that we've started doing with strategic planning as well. So interested to see how the data comes from the five essentials for this year, and then looking forward to how we'll utilize that data in the upcoming months. Summer school will be July 19th through August 12th. It will be an in-person summer school session, because we've had, we have successfully had in-person school. We'll follow the social distancing guidelines. We won't have, right now, we're not slated to have more than 15 students in a session. We'll have both enrichment and skill-building classes again. We're looking at a possible remote option for skill-building. It'll be located at Ames, because we know that there is a lot of work that will be done at Central, on the Central Hauser campus. So we will house summer school this year at Ames. And then we're working on taking possible field trips to Hauser for our transition to Hauser class. We're also going to open up transition to Hauser to not just incoming sixth graders, but our incoming seventh graders as well, because some of them haven't been in the building at all. And then the ones that have been in the building come in, go to their room, but they haven't really moved around the room. I know Ms. May was saying the other day she had taken students up to the gym for something, and some of them were surprised that they had a large gym. They had never seen it. So we just see a need for our incoming seventh graders as well to be a part of transition to Hauser if they choose. So those are the updates from teaching and learning. Do you have any further questions for me? I know you were asking some along the way.
Just had a question back, the first, one of the first items you were talking about in terms of music and volleyball. So I'm wondering, are either of those activities outdoors? Or plan to be somewhat outdoors, or are they all inside?
So right now, given we're still in winter, and knowing Chicago weather, the beginning of March, it may be still colder. We would have it indoors, but what we have been talking about is transitioning towards outdoor lessons for band, for orchestra, as well as for different sporting and co-curricular activities as the weather gets warmer. So, thank you for pointing that out, I meant to say that.
Just a couple of comments. I think the ideas you threw out about Hauser are interesting. I'm glad that we're already starting to think about that, because I'm starting to hear more of that, even at the elementary level, but our hands are kind of tied right now at the elementary level, obviously. So it seems like a great opportunity to get creative and figure out how to get some more of that in-person time. So that's good to hear. I think I agree with you with the, there is so many variables that we don't know about right now. It's going to be interesting to see how the vaccine goes. But probably, like, if we do start that in the spring, definitely over the summer, at least as a board, we probably really need to seriously be figuring out what to do for the fall, because I know parents are going to be pretty irritated if we do another half-day thing, which we'll have to figure out what's going on at that point in time. But hopefully, the trends continue to go down, and we can go back to some level of normalcy. But I'm glad that we're, the administration's already thinking about trying to get ahead of some of that and what information that we need. I think that's going to be a pretty in-depth conversation for us over the summer, just collectively as a board, and how to handle that and everything. And then just on the five essentials, I think the information that we talked about in strategic planning that you alluded to was very interesting to look at, just like how you could get more granular on that, and that was actually a similar thought. So I guess I'm just agreeing with you. I think if we could bring some more of that out, it was, there was a lot of really interesting information in there that I think the board would appreciate seeing, and just like kickoff some debates around some of the information that was there. I don't know if you feel the same way, Dan, but I.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That part of it really stood out to me, that data one that we had. So I guess just agreeing with your comment there, that there might be some benefit to bringing that.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you and the administrative team for proposing to move the Hauser start time to 8:30. I think that's something that's easy to do, and will materially improve the quality of life and the educational outcomes, I think, for middle school students. As, you know, as everyone knows, by the time the kids become teenagers, they, their clock resets. They sleep later, they need more sleep. And so I think there's a lot of research right now that shows that late start times are highly beneficial. And so 8:30, I think, I don't know if that's where it should settle, but I think it's a good step in the right direction, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you for that feedback. Yeah, I know we had talked about it last year, and I know I had some, not concerns. Like, I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to make sure that families were comfortable with that shift. It's one of the upsides of a pandemic, shifting you into something without, you know, without really all that, without addressing those concerns deeply. But it sounds like families are not having, and, you know, I would just want to make sure that we're, when we are moving the start time, which I do agree. I think it's a, if tardies are down, if, you know, if students are getting a little bit more sleep before they come to school, that's great. I just want to make sure, like, you know, that it's well-publicized, so that families are, you know, as we hopefully get back to a normal school pattern, you know, that could affect family schedules. And I just want to make sure we're really making, you know, making it known that that's what's going to happen, so people have a lot of lead time to, you know, adjust. But I think it's a great move, and I'm glad there's been no, no issues as of yet. I mean, we're in a pandemic year. What, I mean, I don't know if there would be an issue, but. Thank you.
I think that's a great point, and it's one of the things we've been talking about. And we did talk about, probably about a year ago, the board discussed it. I think really just a sort of an introductory idea. My recollection is there were mixed opinions. Would certainly want to know kind of the shared opinion. It is something structurally that we would work through administratively. It absolutely matters to us a lot, what families think and feel. We know that also families' work schedules have been very different this year during the pandemic, and that was one of the drivers. But I do think we could solve that with some before-school opportunities for kids to come early, if their parents needed to get them to school early. We also know for middle schoolers, for many middle schoolers, not all, they can walk to school independently usually, and not necessarily, you know, the younger children that often need their parent or a childcare provider to be dropping them off. So again, your, just your thoughts on that matter a lot. We've debated, should we survey the entire community? Because it potentially has an impact on everybody, you know, not the entire community, the entire school community, or just Hauser parents, or incoming Hauser parents also. So, but it was, it's very interesting, because there's just been, as Angela shared, just kind of this natural momentum that occurred, that we went this 8:30 time for other reasons this year. And, you know, the principal and assistant principal at Hauser said, "You know, this is going really well, we have no tardies, it seems to really work well for students." So kind of took a board goal, you know, we lived it out in reality because of the pandemic and the feedback that we're getting in real time. And it doesn't require us to go do a lot of studies, right? You know, it's just, it seems to be better for kids right now.
Yeah, those are good points, Martha, I agree with what you said. I think just to add on to that, two points. One is, when people talk about families, there's always going to be, you know, there's hundreds of families that have kids in Hauser. There would be some that prefer one thing, some that, you know, prefer another. You know, and the question is, how do you decide what to do? And then, given that, it's obviously, it seemed like, you know, doing what's best for students is just the way to go. The other point I would make is that the start time for Hauser used to be 8:35. I think it was that 8:35 for a very long time, and it was changed in 2015 for reasons completely unrelated to, you know, what's beneficial for kids. It had to do with the additional math time. I think Linda will probably remember that, that whole discussion. So really, this has been kind of a temporary situation, where it's been 8 o'clock. And I don't think that was ever settled on as being optimal in any way, so those are just two comments.
Yeah, and now that we have this room for central eat lunch, we don't have to worry about time, those.
Yeah, that's absolutely right, that's the fact of why we did this, right?
Yeah. No, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a great move. I just want to make sure it's public, you know, very, very publicized, so people know it's coming.
Right, yeah, right, definitely communicated early and often.
Yep.
I agree, I think it's great as well. I do think it's important, I think you mentioned it, Martha, or at least have the potential of providing an option for kids who need to be dropped off early. At some point, hopefully, at some point, some of us might be riding the train back into town again. We'll have to see what the train schedules end up being. I know that before, that was always an issue. I think trains were leaving like at 7:50 or 7:45, something like that. I don't know, what are they at these days, Joel?
Once an hour.
Once an hour, okay.
But if, like Jeff said, back before 2015, it was 8:35, and people were making, you know.
I think the bigger issue, and that's, I think, Martha, to your point, I think we're going to have to communicate with the entire school community, because this ends up affecting.
Everybody.
Everybody in terms of, how do we address the kids who, the elementary school kid as well? as well, as the kid who's at Hauser, and how to, getting kids back home. So we may have to create some kind of solution for elementary supervision in the afternoon as well. We're gonna have to address that.
Right, and the other-
And I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying it's part of the puzzle.
Yeah, and we, we thought about that part, too. The other one, Alan, that had come up when we were first looking at was this, our sports league. And we had had time during normal times to talk to our sports league, and that really should not be a deterrent, that we have time, we sometimes have slow transportation, but that's an entirely different issue that we look to solve in other ways. But really, we could get kids to their games and matches with enough time to play them, and that that shouldn't, again, said be a deterrent.
That's a very important, Martha, point, Martha, because that fact was the reason that when they added the extra math time in 2015, that they said that they had to move the start time to 8 o'clock rather than leaving it where it was. That was the justification. So it's good of you. You said that's really not necessary.
All right. I'm going to turn it over to Donna.
Good evening. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about a few items. Really want to take a look back at some of the impact items as a result of the pandemic, especially as its impact on technology. Also gonna talk about, as Angela alluded to, a, a new survey that we're gonna be doing via the Bright Bites platform that we've done in the past. And then also want to update, and I'll update you on the Student Online Personal Protection Act, SOPA, which goes into effect on July 1. So with regards to, you know, the impact of the pandemic, I mean, when you think about, you know, it was 11 months ago, and, you know, everything was, was so much different 11 months ago than it is now. And the amount of change that has occurred in the, in the last 10 and a half months or so. And you look at what our schools looked like then, and what they look like now, what learning looked like then, and what it looks like now. It obviously, it has presented challenges. There's been pain points, but I, I really also think that there's been some silver linings. And with, you know, we have rapid expansion and rapid change, it's gonna have an impact on staff and students and parents. It's gonna have an impact on processes and systems. And while those challenges are there, it's also about how, how do we or have we risen to that challenge? And, and those pains can be growing pains, and growing pains can be a good thing. With new challenges can, can come growth. It can provide the ability to reassess the needs of staff, students, and parents. It can help us to better evaluate the effectiveness of existing processes and systems. I know for our tech team, with the rise in ticket volumes, we had a 270% rise in ticket volumes when compared, when we compared August through the end of December to the first five months of, of, of this, of 2020. We've, we've been having to do more remote support in users outside the organization. And what we've identified is that for us as a department, that ticketing system really isn't designed for both, for either, rather, for the high-ticket volumes or helping assist users that are not a part of our organization, because we have had a, our largest rise in tickets has been from, from parents. And, and so how can we make changes to support those stakeholders more effectively, our internal and external stakeholders? So that's something that we're looking at actually, you know, changing and making some changes to, to that system. And, and with remote learning, and as a result of the pandemic, we've had a variety of systems that have had to come into, into play. With, again, we think about a year ago, we didn't have Zoom. There was no, there was not a high-level use of web conferencing or meeting software. Students and teachers were not meeting in remote environments, remote classrooms. We went from a one-to-one take-home district in grades five through eight to a one-to-one take-home district in grades K through eight. We expanded the at-home content filtering services to all our devices. Student assessments, like the math testing, being administered remotely. Provisioning hotspot devices for families that had poor connectivity at home. The COVID-19 self-certification system, it's a new system. Obviously, there's been saliva screenings that, that weren't going out a year ago. And, and then we've also been able to provide, to try to provide staff with additional classroom resources that just help them to be more effective in the new environment. You know, but, but challenges can be a catalyst for improvement and innovation. And so, when, in looking back at some of the silver lightnings, I, I think it said a lot about the adaptability. And adaptability is such a, a great quality, to be able to, to pivot and adjust, and, and again, to, to different individuals. I'm sure there was different levels of, of stress involved in, in making those changes. But it does allow individuals to, to stretch beyond what they're normally accustomed to. And I think that can help for, for any future change. I think the acceleration of technology skill acquisition, we have, I'm certain we have seen an acceleration in, in skills for all stakeholders, because individual staff, students, parents have had to do more than they had to do in the past. Have had to go into new systems, learn new technologies in support of remote instruction. I think it also gave everyone a new lens in how to look, look at situations. And, and obviously, this is one that we did not have in our, in our tool, in our tool belts prior. You know, the remote, remote learning also really started mainstreaming distance learning with, with the, the volume of, the, the numbers of students, and not only in this district, but, but nationwide and globally. It really has started to mainstream that. So when we look at some of those tools and some of those resources, and we start planning for the future, the conversations that we're having at the leadership team level are, okay, so a, a web-based conference platform, is that going away? Or do we really see that this is a tool that can be used, continue to be used? Now, whether it's Zoom, or whether it's an alternative, that is something that we're gonna be taking a look at. Also with, with one-to-one take-home and K-8, do we contract that level of service, or do we see that, well, the students are responsible enough to handle it? And do we just need to make sure that, you know, that they have proper bags to take, take home? That we, we have to look at our replacement cycles a little bit differently. But these are conversations that we're having at the leadership level. I think, I think over the past year, I think the district has really evolved into really a true digital learning environment because of all these things, because of the necessity to do it. And we have, we purchased some new tools this year, the SchoolAG learning management system. I, I think, again, here's a tool that is, is being probably leveraged more quickly because of necessity, but that's a good thing, because the staff see the need, and with that, they also see the benefit. And also our student data management system, Performance Matters, that has some assessment tools, some online assessment tools, that we actually changed the order of the implementation to bump up or put in front the assessment tool creation product that, that they have versus the, the data warehouse, which is, is being worked on now, because that was a tool that staff could begin using immediately, and especially in light of the environment, it could have a big impact. And of course, you could also look at that there may be no more snow days. But I think what it also really showed is the speed at which we can make change, if and when needed. And, you know, coming, coming from working in a, having worked in a small district when I, when I started, and going to a larger district, and then coming back to a smaller district, the one thing I noticed between, you know, working in a smaller district was, as a benefit, is the ability to make change quickly. I, I started to look at school districts more as, as ships or boats. The bigger they are, the more time it takes to turn them. And we have the ability to be more nimble, and it allowed us to do a lot of this in a, in a very short period of time. Any questions on that? Okay, so, as we mentioned, the Modern Learning Survey. So, as part of the strategic planning process, we were looking at some, some data. We had done a Bright Bites survey in 2018. And we began looking at the data and the plans to reassess, retake that survey in the fall. But as, you know, in light of the pandemic, we thought, well, maybe it would be good if we, we took, we took that a little bit sooner, if we administered that survey sooner, because it could help us in the planning process and, and prior to, to the end of the school year, and, and be able to maybe implement some change over the summer. Well, in contacting Bright Bites, they have actually developed a survey that was designed in response to the pandemic, that is different from the one that we gave in the past. So, the questions that they tried to address with this survey is, do our students and teachers have adequate support to be successful in a modern learning environment? How can we ensure equitable access to technology and learning opportunities for all students? How are student social, emotional competencies adapting to change? How do our parents feel about the current learning environment? And do our school leaders effectively communicate expectations for student learning? Now, some possible outcomes, or some target outcomes from this information would be to gain some visibility into the health and state of our teaching, learning environments, and practices to inform our strategic decisions moving forward. It would help us to identify and address areas of need down to the building and grade level, better ensure equitable access to technology and learning opportunities for all students, and identify technology skill gaps for students and teachers to determine next steps. The Bright Bites survey is actually a platform that is made available to us at no charge via West 40. They have entered, West 40 is entered into agreement, and a lot of area districts also do use the platform, which gives us some good comparative data as well, when comparing with other West 40 school districts. The, the plan for administration would be to send the links for parents home this, this Friday via communication from Martha. The parent survey is approximately five minutes long. The teacher and administrator survey would be taken beginning on February 12th, and then students in grades three through eight would be after that. The approximate time for the teacher survey is 10 minutes, administrator survey, five minutes, and the student survey ranges from 10 to 15 minutes. It's this, it's the same survey, but the lower grades tend to take a little bit longer, but no more than 15 minutes is what they're finding. Any questions on Bright Bites? Okay, Public Act 101-0516, the Student Online Privacy Protection Act. This, this is a, some legislation that was passed in 2019, with going into effect July 1 of this year. In that course of time, that, it's really been within the last, I'd say, seven, eight months where we've seen more information come out, whether it be from, from press, and also different professional development opportunities, many of which I've attended, and, and one of which that is actually on, on the panel for. Most recently, there was the Elementary Learning Technology Center did have a mini-conference, online conference, a couple of weeks ago. It provided a lot of information. And, well, the Learning Technology Center is, is, it's an ISB program that supports all pre-K-12 schools in, in the state. They have partnered with the Student Data Privacy Consortium. This is a special interest group of the nonprofit Access for Learning community. They also have partnerships with 28 other states, and they address the specific needs of those states related to student data privacy. Student data privacy laws do very greatly from state to state. With Illinois passing the new legislation, it really became one of the, if not the most strict in terms of securing student data and requirements, not only on web operators, but also school districts. The Student Data Privacy Consortium in September published a national data privacy agreement. So a standard data privacy agreement that could be used across the country, and with, with, with changes or making the individual state changes. With, what this is allowed is for districts to, and the platform that they have created is allowed for a district to enter into an agreement with a particular web resource provider. I'll use an example, CSO. So if one Illinois school district has entered into an agreement with CSO using the National Data Privacy Agreement that they've developed for Illinois, it allows other districts to piggyback on that agreement without having to reach out to that vendor. The vendor automatically is, has agreed to those terms in meeting the SOPA, the SOPA requirements. So it allows really districts to work collaboratively in trying to get all of these vendors to come on board and sign the data privacy agreements. The, so what we're in the process of, of doing is, through that platform, populating our SOPA compliance management platform with those resources, and then begin the process of reaching out to, to those vendors with which we need to establish agreements by July 1. We've also been updating and creating new internal compliance management and resource approval processes and procedures. Those are being developed based on this new system going into place. We will be providing professional development to staff on SOPA, presenting the new platform, and the associated new processes and procedures in March. One of the requirements of the law is that districts must have a public-facing dashboard for, for parents to be able to view the information that is required by, by law within the legislation. Any questions on SOPA?
Don, you, you mentioned that Illinois has become one of the most stringent. I mean, is there anything that's, that's sticking out as something that's harder to comply with, or something that is getting in the way with how we were operating before, or how does all that work out?
Okay, well, the, the challenge is that, number one, the resources, the web operators, they must agree to the, the new requirements. In addition, they must share who their, any third parties that they're sharing their, the information with, and what information they're actually using and for what purpose. So there's, there's a, a greater level of transparency on their part. Just, just at the district level, we have to make that information- Just at the district level, we have to make that information public to parents, along with the contracts and the data sharing agreements. So, all that information will be public, needs to be public as of July 1. So, within the parent platform, what the parent will see is the resources we use, a description of the resource, the grade levels that use the resource, a rationale for why we use the resource, the terms of service of that vendor, our contract, our data sharing agreement, the actual data fields that vendor is using, how they're using it, and who they're sharing it with. We only have access to so much of that, and so it is reliant on not only the vendor agreeing, but then providing it. The other component is that it must be checked twice a year. So, by July 1, and then again by December 31st. So, it is a twice-a-year check because terms of services change.
Are you finding some vendors that aren't complying?
It's difficult to say. It's, I'd say that initially, in working with, I mean, we've been working with one vendor, they're just not very responsive. The platform, I think, will help, because now it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of districts that are also, I mean, some districts are going to be doing, probably, are working more quickly, but the more quickly they work, then other districts can take advantage because they've established, if they've established an agreement, now you can piggyback on that agreement, and you have that information. So, the hope is that, you know, some districts will be more successful, some districts will have less resources, and they'll be helped by the other districts. But it's, my understanding is that it's not that, it's not going to happen with most of these vendors, it's just that some vendors, it's going to be very less, it's going to be, you know, it may be June before we know, or before we get a signed agreement from them.
If you don't have an agreement, can they still serve us?
No, they cannot.
So, the onus will be on them to get this, get their act together as a whole.
Yeah, we won't be able to renew with them, nor any other school district, not Illinois. So, there's...
So, there's literally some severe consequences to them, because if they can't provide, if they can't provide the service, then we don't have...
Then we're breaking the law.
Yeah. Well, and then, they can't, we can't use, we legally cannot use them, so they've violated, they've violated the provisions of their contract.
So, that is, the sentiment is that in other states, I think some resources have, most resources have complied. I think it will largely be based on, well, do we have, are we paying for a subscription? You know, what is the resource, and what is it actual targeted use? We do have resources that we subscribe to, but we also have resources that are being used that, you know, we just, at this point, we're having parents sign off on agreeing to use, those will go away, because if we don't have a data sharing agreement, a parent signing off on a child using it, it doesn't comply with the law. If we're exchanging data with the vendor, if it's a resource that doesn't use, where students don't have to log into, then that's fine. But there are a lot of single sign-on resources where, you know, you can log in with a Google So, it's a matter of working with staff to help in identifying those. But there are also some integrated tools to help us identify on the, like firewall side, what resources are being used and to what extent.
But, I mean, don't, I mean, even those resources, isn't that still, I mean, they share data, I mean, even if it's a single sign-on, you log into Google.
Right, and that's why, that's why those resources, if they didn't agree, they would, they wouldn't be available for use.
So, like, all the quote-unquote free apps are going to go, I mean, will they go away with this, or are they reaching out to us, or are we reaching out to them?
We will be reaching out to them, but we have, I mean, we have in excess of 100 resources to go through, starting with the, our pay subscriptions. We'll be able to get, we'll be able to get the requests out quickly, it's just the follow-up. And again, the hope is that we're not the only one following up with them, somebody else establishes one agreement, and then we can just piggyback on those agreements.
Just so I care if these are, like, are the school districts maybe, are the school districts getting together to say, okay, you're going to take Khan Academy, you're going to take, like, CSO, to, like, sort of negotiate?
Not yet, but we continue to have meetings, yeah, to, I know, there's a couple that I definitely want to target. But, yeah, I think that will happen, it's just, in getting organized like that, we're not there right now. Okay, thank you.
Don? I'd like to back up to your earlier part of your presentation. You noted growing pains and transitioning to a more remote support situation. Has our equipment held up? Do you think that we're going to have to change plans for one-on-one technology when we're back to quote-unquote "normal times"?
I think, it's tough to say, because a lot of, there's a lot of devices that aren't in our hands, and we only see them when they need to repair. Given the age of some of that equipment that is out there, that, if we are going to stay in that, in a one-to-one take-home environment, then we need to come up with a more formalized replacement cycle. Right now, what happens with those devices that we've been using at the lower grades, at least at the grades three and four, they've been getting the hand-downs from the eighth graders after they're done. So, we haven't had to buy new equipment for those grade levels. We buy around a three-year cycle with the fifth-grade devices, and a three-year cycle with the, with the six through eight. So, that helps to replenish, replenish those grade levels at this point. So, we'll, you know, we have to just map it out and see what's needed. Any other questions?
No, no more, I guess, no questions, but I just, I do have to go, sort of going back to what you said, that, like, this past year, essentially since March, has been a huge lift, and it's a testament, I think, to district, to your department, to the teachers, having to pick this up very short order, and taking it to a completely different model that no one expected, like, 18 months ago. So, I do have to say, thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to get to a point, you're talking about silver linings and finding ways to improve, I find that really refreshing, and just shows the strategic thinking that's going on about, we're not just handling what's given to us, but we're making sure that along the way, we're improving processes that were maybe okay before, but we're finding better ways, so.
Yeah, I think any time a, you know, a system gets stressed, you find where your, you know, where your dinks are, you know.
And sometimes people though just think, well, we'll get back to where we were, but it's nice to think, let's build upon this and even get better than where we were. So, it's just, it's refreshing to, just wanted to say it was nice to hear the way you, the lens you're looking through.
Okay, thanks.
And actually, maybe, Don, before you sit down, the next item we have under Education Committee, because it didn't quite fit anywhere perfectly, is the saliva screening data. And Don's been working with some of the questions that you all had posed, and trying to reorganize the data around, I know you, the board's been very interested in not just how many people have consented, but how many people remember to bring their vials, and how many vials were actually processed. And there was also a question about the staff participation, and we have about 250 staff members, that includes every person who works in District 96. And I think there was also a real interest in, you know, classroom teachers and the staff members that are most of all, you know, working directly with children day in and day out. So, trying to improve on that data, you can see there's still some gaps in it in terms of what pieces we're putting together, but if there are questions, and certainly compliments too, to the technology team for trying to refine this and make this, you know, just more refined, more granular data.
Yeah, the gaps are, I mean, the reason why there's gaps is just data that wasn't being collected. So, we did make change and process so that when, when staff are now turning in their vials, they aren't included with the student ones. And then we're also separating out, I think, certified staff from non-certified staff. So, again, we can use those numbers. And, yeah, just more about, and looking at our, our employee, we're reviewing the employee list, because also it's, we're also in a different environment because of, both staff work in multiple buildings, and we have remote staff. So, how are we, so we're going through that, and so the next iteration of the report will be able to fill in those gaps. And I guess, I would just ask, if there's anything that you feel that's missing that you'd like to see, then we would just, you know, we would just need to take a look to see, well, do we have the data, or what change do we need to make so that we can report on it?
Still a question?
That's exactly what I was going to ask about, that just kind of, where are we, what do we think we can get, but I think it all just...
I think the next, because we made the change so that the next report you get would have, we'd be able to fill in that. Because the nurses are the ones that are collecting the vials, and then there's what they distribute, and then what they actually collect and drop off. So, they're tracking that, and they report on that every Friday. And then that's when the dashboard gets updated, Friday afternoon.
Everything you just outlined makes a lot more sense now, because when I went in to drop it off, I heard some terminology, I was, I don't know what you're talking about. They're like, yeah, you're not certified, I was like, yeah, okay.
We're not, we're not doing any reporting on school board members. Not part of the report.
You were neither certified nor...
Teachers did wonder why we were making them put their saliva into a different bin. And so, we're really just trying to determine, again, that question of those that are directly with students, the great majority of the time, you know, what's our level of participation there.
And I think the extra part two of, like, okay, so what portion is remote, what portion is in-person, what portion is together, what portion is not, that really kind of helps, will help, I think, really understand kind of what we're talking about more on the data, too, so that'll be, that'll be good. Maybe more questions after the next evaluation.
I mean, I think, you know, we have about 30% of our students still remote, and we have, you know, similar portion of our staff working in our remote academy, some who choose to work in the building, but some who actually are working remotely, so. There are a number of factors here to try to capture.
I guess I just, and it's not significant, but do we have any idea why actually the numbers are dropping slightly?
And we, the number of participating?
Right. I mean, it's not significant, but...
No, we noticed it as well, and, you know, not sure, could it be because people are getting vaccinated, I don't, could it be because, like...
And we did ask about, I mean, students wouldn't be being vaccinated, some staff, we did ask, you know, District 102 to share with us what their thoughts were about staff that are beginning to receive vaccinations, their recommendations, that everybody continues to participate, you know, until we fully know that the effectiveness of vaccines. I said, you know, truly, we simply do not know, I mean, I do know that it's not showing up as saliva positive, so, but that's, is that just an anomaly of this particular count? Again, I don't know, there's a lot of moving pieces to this one, we know.
Thank you.
All right, next is the Finance Committee. I'm sorry, Finance and Facilities together.
Good evening, I'd like to highlight the long-term financial projections that's included in your board package. This slide shows the ending fund balance that we saw last month in our audit. I split the funds into operating and non-operating. Top group is the operating funds, and they're related to the annual operation of the district. And the total fund, total operating fund balances add up to 18.1 million, which is just under 70% of what we spend in a year. The lower group of funds are the non-operating funds, debt service, and capital projects. These funds are generally spent over several years and don't follow an annual cycle. The projections include spending non-operating funds and transferring a million dollars from operating to debt next year, that'll be needed to make our last debt payment. So, here's a list of facility projects that we've been talking about recently. These projections, the top group are included in these projections, and you see that the Hollywood multipurpose room, only about 17% of it's already planned for, for assigning some miscellaneous project money to it. So, if we wanted to include that, we would need to transfer some fund balance, and that's the 83% down on the list on the bottom of not included projects. So, I just want to make sure we understand that these aren't all in the projections yet until we approve them. Also not included is the Central House or Campus that we're looking at, with a wide range of possibilities there, the three and a half to eight and a half million. And trying, moving forward with making Light Park a two-section school, which would mean modifying the auditorium into a multipurpose room. So, the group on the bottom there is not included in these projections. Hopefully, you can see this on your laptop, or you've seen it enough by now, but this is the projections that we did last February. The red lines represent the year-end balances, and as you go across, it goes from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 29. And this was presented last February. The two numbers in the green boxes are the fund balance, what we thought FY20 would end at, at 15.1 million, and the other green box way to the right, FY29, we were projecting that it would end at 12.9 million. So, this is an update to that. A lot's happened since last February, and one of the biggest impacts to this number was the audit that we just got last month, and went through and updated. So, you can see those two numbers, the one in the middle representing last year went from 15.1 million up to 18.1 million. And making, taking that number and projecting 10 years, and making some less optimistic assumptions, I guess, we would end up FY29 at 16.8. So, that's an improvement, and then to keep the 10-year projections, I added FY30, and we can compare to that as the year goes on. Here's a list of the assumptions, the major assumptions. I put what we used last February to come up with that first graph, and how we adjusted them to create the second graph for this year. So, on the revenue, the property tax, we reduced CPI from just assuming it would be 2% going forward, and dropped it to an average of 1.8%. And property tax collections, which had been over 98% for quite a few years, we're assuming it'll be an average of 97%. So, it's not going to be a smooth 97%, this year would probably be lower, and gradually working our way back up to what hopefully will be 98% eventually. And on the bottom, the assumptions made on expenditures, last year we had 1 million in, under maintenance and repair for all the years, for 10 years, and we've, with, really because of the surprise with... And we've, with, really because of the surprise with the fire protection, thought we should up that number to 1.2 million every year. Last year, we assumed health insurance costs at four and a half percent increase every year and we're prepared now for a 6% increase in health insurance costs. And then all the other expenditures, we just put a flat 3% all the way out. Any questions on the projections?
Just that, that last slide, so that 6% for health insurance, that's what we're getting, that's what you're seeing more closely as the actual, rather than four and a half?
No, I think we've been averaging lots, closer to 4%, but we're not sure where that's going, so this was an opportunity to be a little more cautious. It's, by changing it from four and a half percent to 6% for 10 years, it affects that, like that FY29 number by about $400,000. So, if it comes in at four and a half, you know, then we'll beat that by 400,000. So, it's, it's more conservative than what we did last year.
Okay.
Jim, do you think there's going to be any chance of like, non-recurring expenses to start up to full capacity at the schools? Or do you think that mostly, i.e., are there going to be any like, extra preparation activities or extra expenses to, to get us to have everyone in the building? Or do you think that that's because of the way we're operating right now, that's really a non, non-issue?
Well, I assume going forward that we would be back to how things were two years ago. And I didn't mention this, but last year was, there were some ups and downs in the accounts, I went back to the previous year and added 3% and 3% instead of kind of building 10 years out on this unusual year.
Okay.
And last year came in, you know, favorable, so I think it was more prudent to take a more conservative number and use that to go forward.
And Joel, I'll just, I'll just add in, this is the kind of thing we do wonder about and talk about very regularly. So, social distancing, as you know, is really the, the main driver of our current class size and our current configurations and the, you know, elementary and the AM elementary and the PM. You know, if, if social distancing continues, but let's say the virus is better and we would like to bring kids in more, would we consider hiring more teachers, putting, using every available into our buildings, like our gymnasiums, our multipurpose rooms, et cetera, for classrooms, right, to bring in more kids, but still social distance? So, you know, that is, like, would we, we would need more teachers to do that. You know, if that's sort of what you're saying, like, are there other costs that could come? If the pandemic continues, if we're still trying to, you know, again, we don't know what those guidelines are going to be for the coming year, but this, these are exactly the things that we're trying to anticipate and, and plan for. So, I think that's kind of what your question is getting at, right?
To some degree. A lot of it's very speculative, so, and that's why I'm not holding anyone to this, but do you think, and this is, you may choose to defer on this one, is there even sufficient staff out there to hire in this environment?
I think that's, I think that's another great question. You know, I would hope so, we've always been able to attract high-quality staff, but we do know the teacher shortage is real, we do know that the pandemic has turned people in the field, you know, away from the field in some areas. So, again, I think there are just challenges upon challenges and I, you know, I think in my head here around February, I always, I just keep hoping that next year we return to what we considered sort of the, you know, norm, normal schooling, but, but we have no assurance of that at this, at this point in time. So, I mean, lots that we're waiting for and, as we know, the six-foot social distancing thing came from the State Board of Ed and the Illinois Department of Public Health, but the American Academy of Pediatrics had said three feet would be enough and then, you know, the state said, no, we want you at six feet. We do know, you know, I think people feel comfortable at six feet, six feet mask-wearing, you know, we believe that we have not seen the in-school transmission, that has been the great concern of every educator. We also know that there, there are just these issues around learning and, you know, we talked, we talked about our math scores, we've, we have been talking about additional math support, you know, so again, we'll be coming to you as, you know, really in these months ahead, trying to speculate, trying to determine what we need, but would there be things that could potentially, you know, contribute to what, what our costs are? Because we think there's some additional things we need to do for, for our students.
And I, I wouldn't be surprised at all, I, I think now we do have a culture of six feet and mask, for most people. Six feet mask-wearing is safe and acceptable and so changing that up even would be a challenge because now you're fighting against kind of what things, what people have gotten used to, so.
And I just don't, I don't envision that we'll be returning children to school vaccinated. You know, it's my great hope and sort of a belief and we have some assurance that our staff will be, you know, I mean, will it be a mandate? I, I don't necessarily think so, but will there be a high level of participation? I think yes.
Yeah, and I think for the financial stuff, I mean, these, the conservatism, I appreciate the conservative nature of it for the, the long-term, just kind of adjusting the overall cost, because we don't know a lot of the variables, but I think to your point, Joel, I think that's probably more of a, seem, hopefully, it's more of a short-term issue. But I, I think a lot of that is why we probably need to start thinking more collectively in that maybe April, May, June, like the end of school year timeframe and then throughout the summer of different ways, because if we're going to, if we are, I didn't even think about that, but if we do try to hire staff, that takes time and train them, bring them in, things like that, but you know, at the end of the day, we can't stay six feet apart and masked for the rest of our, you know, human existence, so. And the, the three feet thing, that, the APA has been on that for, you know, seven or eight months now, but with smaller children and things like that, so. There's, there's a lot to take into consideration about how to do that, some of that might be with the expenses, but it's, it's definitely not an easy conversation to have, so, lots to go into that. But as far as the 10-year projections, I, I like some of the bigger things that you kind of up there and then if we come in under, then we just have a little bit of extra money for some of those unknown things. So, to me, this made sense and, and as always, I think Linda always says it, so I'll say it this time, just the way that you format this is just super easy to read and understand and you don't have to really dig through it and try to interpret it. So, the charts and the graphs and the narrative and everything, I, I find extremely useful, so, there's, there's 13 pages of information here, but it was very easy to digest, so thank you.
I, I'd like to second that as well, Jim. This is, this was easy, easy to read and understand and digest.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fitten? All right, thanks, thanks, Mr. Fitten, that was a very good presentation, appreciate it.
Jim, were you going to talk about the ESRS money and the central fire, central utility project? I'm sorry, that's the one that we have, that's the small data.
There's, there was a bill passed into law at the end of December to, to spread, to give money to the states and I, I don't have official amounts yet, there's a, a lot of estimating and guessing going on and I know that number looks really exact for an estimate, but I've seen it go up and down a little bit. But we do expect to get close to $600,000 from the last stimulus bill. And that's referred to as ESRS, to the sequel to the CARES, which was ESRS one a few months ago, and that was only $150,000, so significantly more. And I didn't put that in the projections, so when it becomes real, we'll put it in there.
I appreciate that.
So, are there any like, strings attached to that or is there any kind of proof of expenses that we have to demonstrate to get?
It'll have to be COVID-related expenses that we incur. They wanted to cover like educational gaps that have occurred because of COVID and they encouraged you to think about one-time costs, not something that you do that's going to be there for 10 years, because this is a, you know, finite amount of money, but it's COVID-related.
So, like, so the testing that we're doing, saliva testing and, this saliva testing that we're doing?
Yes, yeah, so that was the first thing we were thinking of, is putting the saliva testing in there.
Which I think this should be more than enough to cover our, our projection of what we had, I think, right? Because that was only like two-something, so this will give us some additional money for other COVID-related things that we've brought on, so that's, that's nice to see, get some help.
Is it a fair assumption, though, that we shouldn't have trouble coming, finding that 600,000 or is it potential that, you know, our one-time costs haven't been that much?
Oh, I think we'll find things that qualify that. You just plan to pay for locally, like, you know, maybe some extra technology.
I was going to say, there's got to be COVID-related costs that are, that we could use. There's no way you haven't spent that much.
And then the central utilities change order, that Ramesh was here a couple months ago to talk to you about that. And now that it's, it's better defined, there's a memo in your board packet and we will ask you to approve it next month, even though the work's really done, it's a significant amount of money in a change order, over $10,000, so we do want to have it go through the board approval process.
When is that project going to be finished, I mean, totally finished?
So, I, I think it is essentially finished, other than the landscaping, which they weren't able to do because of the time of year.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there's some, there's some paving as well.
Yeah, in that memo, I think it states that, that, you know, there's, everything's done until the weather clears and they can finish through it.
The number came in, I think $350,000 less than what we had set aside for last month, so that helped and that is included in our projections.
I read that and I thought I was misreading it. I was like, oh!
I read it three times.
I know, I was like, that's good news.
Seeing as our surprise sprinkler situation going on, it's nice to have that kind of there for the next immediate, I mean, that we got to do, so. And this, I don't know, this one felt like it just kept getting out of control, so it's nice to see, we've kind of got a, you know, finalization of it and it came in well under what we thought it was going to, because it was just a mess, but it's fixed, so.
Anything else for me?
I noticed on, on the agenda, there's the, the first item attachment with the cafeteria memo, I don't know if we need to discuss that or?
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to make sure before you sat down again.
We, a question came up, are we, are we distributing more lunches or fewer lunches and how easy is it? Well, they loosened the rules a little bit on what, what qualifies for reimbursement and we've been averaging, I think, 320 meals a day for lunches. And that's, you know, a normal year, we average about 270. So, they're getting out to all the schools, Central and Hauser, you don't really have to sign up for it, but the other schools, you know, there's a form on our website and parents fill it out and kind of put in their order and then we deliver it and they pick it up at the school, so it's going really well, I think. Everyone that wants lunches is getting them.
I, I think the thing to note is that we are continuing to support our families when times are tough and they need it. I mean, people are coming and asking for that, those lunches, so.
One last thing to think about, too, how are you going to feed them? That's, that's going really well and Judy does a fantastic job.
Good.
Any other questions for Mr. Fitten? If not, thank you and I guess unless Joel has any further comments, that would be the end of the Finest section.
Okay, next up is the Policy Committee.
Nope.
Okay, no policies tonight. And then next is the Personnel Committee.
Nothing personnel.
Sorry, disappointed, Dan.
Kinda, you know. It's only 8:25. Let's see, so has, has any additional public comment come in?
Okay. Nope.
All right, then future meeting dates is February 17th, 2021, is the regular business meeting at 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room at Ames. The board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.